Good evening and welcome to the January 6th meeting of the Select Board. If everyone would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone would please make sure that all cell phones are on vibrate, silent. That would be greatly appreciated. We'll start with the public hearing. The first public hearing is for the Library and Community Center bond for $3,998,77. I was going to invite Lindsay up, but she's already at the mic.
Hi, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Leslie Lindsay. I'm the chair of the Library Board of Trustees and a member of the Barington Library Foundation, which is a nonprofit that has been working alongside the trustees and the community members to fundraise for our new public library and community center. So we think it's important to start off by just quickly mentioning that this has been a wonderful collaboration and truly community at its finest. There has been continued enthusiasm and teamwork between the working pieces of this project, between the Library Board of Trustees and the Library Foundation Board, working together, the community volunteers working hard to fundraise, raise awareness, many helped with their time, others through private donations. Community businesses have supported our project by holding and sponsoring events, giving in monetary donations, as well as publicizing information for the project. S&amp;P Architecture, who has been working with the library trustees and community leaders on the project since 2008, having a very extensive history in building libraries throughout New Hampshire. Lastly, Bowlin, a construction management firm hired by our building committee last year, has been a pleasure to work with and extremely informative throughout our project. So I didn't want to go back and start where we were last year and explain to you all of the reasons that we believe we need a new space. I think everyone in this room has heard our presentations repeatedly, so I thought I would fast forward into giving an update of where we've been in the last year. So since the vote in 2019, we have, wait, hold on, sorry. In March of 2019, we brought forth a vote article that was supported by our town in majority, just missing the supermajority needed to pass the bond. That was the first time that we did present the bond to the town, even though years have been spent working diligently to do so. So after the vote, we got together with all of our volunteers and we energized and went through all of the different things that we thought contributed to our lack of, you know, getting the vote passed. And we energized everybody, continued to have meetings monthly for trustees and foundation members. Donations have been made, grants have been applied to, some have been received. Events were attended around the community, around the community answering questions at all the open houses, at any community event, we have been there. The building committee has worked diligently with S&amp;P and Bowlin on value engineering the project. The budget was visited repeatedly to come forward with the most accurate and concise plan using real, up-to-date numbers. We participated in select board meetings. We have given informational meetings for the community to get input. They were held this past fall. And there's more to come from us between now and the vote. So a very exciting thing to announce is that when our library foundation was formed, we had a goal to raise $500,000 to put towards this project. I'm so excited to be able to be the one to announce that we've reached the goal with so many people's help in the town. Our latest updated fundraising total is $501,628. This is a historical moment in Barrington, one that I am proud to be a part of, one that we should all be proud to be a part of. How amazing is it to live in a community where people got together, found a goal, and worked really hard to do this? This is not a small amount of money to be raised. So as far as our design, where are we at? So this is kind of tricky to see in here with the lights, I apologize for that, but we can make this presentation also available to others. It looks like Connor is gonna work the light magic. But this is just a bird's eye view to show placement. Again, I think everybody in this room knows this, but it's important for us to still present it. So located up on Ramsdale Lane, you see the ECLC, you see the rec. department where the library currently exists as well, the playground, and then the new proposed library space. This slide is showing that there are two entrances to the building. You'll see right off of the parking lot, that front entrance, which will be for patrons to use. And then there's a back entrance that is called the kids' entry right now. And this is a special entrance that is only going to allow admittance for the ECLC students and staff. That way, it helps with safety and ease of service for other patrons in the library while the young kids come over for their time. So gone are the days of very, very quiet libraries. If any of you have stepped into our library any day of the week, it is bustling, it is loud, it is full of energy. Given the tight quarters, it makes it even seem more loud. So in this new space, we have been very conscious of creating active areas and passive areas. So in that middle there where you walk in, a very active area where people are able to grab new releases and talk to one another. And then the passive areas all along the walls where you notice they are placed by windows to create nice, comfortable spaces. The building does take into account the sun, so it will be a very bright space. Those dotted ones are to show you where the stacks are of actual books. This one is to show you the purposefulness, I'm not sure if that's a word, of the layout here. So the blue space here you'll see is the hub of the library. And the line of the blue where it meets all the other colors is the reference desk. So you'll see that the folks that are standing behind the circulation desks will be able to look into all of the other areas. So one-floor building to help decrease the likelihood of new staff needing to be hired. Also, we took into mind the community center feel that the folks in this town really are looking for. We currently see lots of people that walk into our library and stand right where you walk in and find someone that they haven't seen in a week and start catching up about life. This offers people an actual place to sit and do that. It says cafe. We like to be clear that it is, you know, a couple Keurig machines, double muffins, staff people, you know, in the cafeteria. But this is a nice area for folks to just gather, as well as the patio that was sponsored. Okay, this one is showing the very needed upgrade in our new building for the staff members that work at our library. For those of you that have not been up to the library and seen the space that our staff works in, I urge you to do so. Find Melissa, she'll be here for. The staff break floor allows for two people to sit, and it actually doesn't because it is often used as a storage closet. It houses all of the cleaning products for the building. It houses all the janitorial things, and the stuff that we can't fit there is in a shed outside. As well as, we have four people working in a 12-by-12 space, and Melissa's office has the server in it as well. It is far too small, so this shows you that it is spread out and is more manageable for the number of staff we currently have. Many residents told us that something that our town lacks is needed spaces. So this green on the side is the program room. This can fit up to 100 people. We picture library events occurring in here and people able to use this space if the library doesn't have an event going on. The group study room is over to the right. The first one that's closest to the purple is a smaller study room that holds, depending on, you know, the age of the folks in there, anywhere from, you know, two to six people. We ideally picture that as a place for studying, for interviews, for test-taking, for small group projects. The one behind it is called the Barrington Room, could also be used for all of those things. It could also be used for trustee meetings or other meetings in town. It sits 12 people, it's more of a board room. And we hope to hold some historical Barrington stuff in that space as well. Also, the folks in our town have stressed that we don't have a space after hours, as we see currently, we're in the school. And we feel that this could be a great resource for that. So it's purposeful where we planned the bathrooms, that gateway walk at the end of the day, allowing after-hours use to continue. This is the outside image of the building, showing that we will have about 15 parking spaces. Currently, we have 12, so that will be much more durable. There we go. This is the front entrance facing Route 9. And this is showing us the walking path that will lead the ECL students safely to enter the building. Currently, if you go to the library at a time where the ECLC kids are going over, likely it's raining and they all have umbrellas and they're walking in a group through the parking lot while you're trying to get in reverse. It's very stressful, so this will be really great for the kids to be able to have a nice walk to the library that's safe. And finally, the budget. So this year, the total cost of our budget is $4,239,877. The fundraising cash on hand when we enter currently is $241,000. The bond amount, fund the taxpayers, would be $3,998,77. And after consideration, the trustees have complied with a recognition of the bond being paid back over 20 years. A groundbreaking of the building that began in late September, early October of this year, construction would take about 10 months with a late summer opening in 2021. We've worked diligently to create a space for the community and build a building that would last for us for 50 years. This building will allow us to gather as a community and use the library in the traditional sense, but also open us up to new and exciting programming that we otherwise just aren't able to do. These are the websites that you can find more information, the foundation website, the library website, in my email. If anyone has questions or wants hard copies of information, we have our budget that we submitted to the board, the select board. I have it here with me as well, if anybody would like to look at that. It was just too small to put up on the big screen. So that'll do it.
Board comments?
My only comment is, what will the cost, after everything is deducted from the initial $4 million plus, what would the cost be to the taxpayers?
$3,998,77.
All right, if you broke that down, what would it be for the tax rate? I said, that was my fault, not yours. Yes, what would the cost be on the tax rate?
So the bond request this year is very similar, just dollars more than the bond request last year. So the impact to taxpayers will actually go down, and it could be for two reasons. We don't have an updated estimate from the municipal bond bank, but the main reason why the cost to taxpayers would go down as a tax rate impact would be because the tax rate went down. So because our value went up by about 12%, the $1 on the tax rate gets you more now than it did last year. And so if all things were equal, the impact would go down. But the other factor that may contribute to the impact of the tax rate going down would be the interest rates. So we probably won't have updated interest rate information from the bond bank for their January sale. They transitioned from a July and December sale to a, or from a June and December sale to a July and January. So we won't have updated numbers, so they might be conservative with their estimates using the current interest rates which exist, but that might contribute to the tax rate impact going down as well. It'll be somewhere in the $90 to $100 range would be my guess.
Thank you for that information.
Other questions from the board? Anything from the advisory committee? At this time, I'll open public comment.
Good evening. My name is Matt Hunter, resident, not on Stormwater Way. Basically, we just, I want to congratulate the board and all the volunteers that have done enormous due diligence to this. I think it's really important to appreciate the fact this has been a decade-long project with various people coming in at various stages to contribute to this project. So this isn't just a flash and pan through. This has been deep, long-term commitment to get this project underway. So I really would ask for the town's support that we actually move this project forward, get ourselves a new library, and in the community room. My apologies, my congratulations to the board.
Diane St. Jean, Small Road. I want to thank Leslie for doing the update, and I just have a question for you, Leslie. When you mentioned that large program room holding about 100 people, in previous presentations you mentioned that it could be divisible, and I'm wondering, is it still planning that that would be divided up into smaller space?
That's a great question, Diane. That's okay, no worries, it's fine. So, what is the news again? So as far as the community room being broken in half, that was a conversation, that that was always the goal. Currently, if you look at our budget, that is one of the things that we have talked about, reducing and the scope reduction. When we were asked to look at our budget line for line and to come back with a smaller number, a more succinct budget, that was unfortunately one of the things that we discussed. Does that mean that it's absolutely off the table? No, it's our goal to, of course, have it on the table, but as our budget stands right now, that was something that we had to eliminate. Just to clarify, that it is still possible, and again, that we would like it to go through with that, but if you look at the budget, I just want to be very transparent that it does say on the budget that that is not there. But the goal is to have it there.
Any other public comments? All right, this time I'm closing public comment.
And if you want to wait to open the next public comment, I'll give the brief presentation, and then the rest of the articles are in order if we can open the public hearing then.
Are we voting as we go, or voting at the end?
We'll vote at the end on their appointments, for the recommendation.
Very good. Stormwater Assessment Management Grant?
Yeah, so I'm gonna start at the beginning. It'll be quick, though, trust me.
Thank you.
When you see 38 slides, 20 of those are the, just the separate Warren articles. Will be quick, and then we'll leave plenty of time for questions. So obviously, it's been a long budget process. Special thanks to the Select Board Advisory Budget Committee and Department Heads. This started for us on September 23rd. There's a lot of progress and hard work to get here, so credit to everybody involved. The local government that we have is funded by a variety of sources, primarily property tax. Vehicle registrations is another large portion, and much smaller is fees for service, some state aid, very little federal aid, and some miscellaneous funding sources. This is the municipal tax rate over the last number of years, and what you'll see is it's very stable. The Select Board over this term and the staff, department heads, town administrator have worked very hard to keep the tax rate on the town side stable, and that's, this is evidence of that. You'll notice the two areas where there's reductions, the asterisk indicates that there was an assessment adjustment. And so, for instance, between 2018 and 2019, the increase on the tax rate on the town side was 0%. So the perfectly offsetting the 12.25% increase in assessment. And for 2019, you'll see the tax rate was set at $22.67, which was a reduction of over a couple of dollars. Certainly, we raised more in taxes. There were increases on the school side and on the county side. So the taxes, the total taxes collected did go up, but the tax rate went down. You'll see the breakdown, the education portion for the school went up 4.87%. The county went up almost 3%. And again, that revaluation process that we went through, that's mandatory every five years, increased values an average of 12%. And again, that's the average, so property owners in Barrington experience a wide spread of value increases or decreases to reach that average of 12%. But the tax rate dropping $2 helped absorb some of that impact. This is the pie chart breakdown that's typically in the town report, so you'll see the municipal portion is down to 16% this year of the total tax, total portion of the tax rate. Education is 73%, the county is 11%. So measures of financial stability, certainly a stable municipal tax rate is a very strong sign of financial stability. Reason being, when you have spikes and valleys in a tax rate, it creates unease, and it's difficult for residents to plan, it's difficult for the municipality to plan, and so that stable tax rate over the last eight years is a very good sign of financial stability. Another good measure is the unassigned fund balance. Like this year, we've talked about that more than in years past, so I'm comfortable that most that have followed these meetings understand that the town's position in unassigned fund balance. We're certainly less now than we were this time last year, but still right around that targeted midpoint, which is very important to keep. And so before going into vote this year, Barrington holds just under $4 million, which is 13.2%. But as you'll see, as we'll discuss later, the Warren articles that ask to use unassigned fund balance bring that down into the 11% range. So this is a history, one of the benefits of the unassigned fund balance has been used for, over the last number of years, is capital projects. And so this just demonstrates the investment in Barrington's infrastructure that the Select Board and voters have made using that unassigned fund balance. And obviously, that spike in 2019 was in large part for the $1,025,000 towards the town hall project. So the operating budget, the proposed operating budget this year is $7,308,47, up just over $175,000, and the increase is 2.48%. In general, there was, there's a 3% wage increase as decided by the Select Board. The benefits, we were fortunate that in the group that we're in for Health Trust, our health insurance increase was only 1%, which was a very, very positive news for us. There's money in the budget to fund the results of the compensation study, which the Select Board is still working on finalizing. There's also some money in there for moving expenses and a portion of the lease requirements in the current town hall, which we'll see in a second. I'll just cover the individual budget lines other than wages and benefits that are proposed to increase $10,000 or more. Election wages, there's four elections this coming year, and a proportional increase in a lot of those election lines. We'll see a corresponding decrease next year. Administration contracts, it's a $50,000 increase. A large portion of that moves from other lines, consolidating our phone system with Office 365, and there, the Office 365 licenses are all in there this year. Previously, they were in the incident fund. And some of the IT infrastructure that the Select Board has invested in has some ongoing maintenance costs. Rental lease line is up $35,700. So the lease requirements to leave that space, we've made certain modifications that we have to undo. There may be requirements on the pavement and other things to turn that, to return that building in the condition as determined by the lease. So properly budgeting for that money is important. Vehicle fuel, so we underbudgeted by a fair amount this past year. This increase of $12,500 properly budgets from our utilization, and it's, you know, still down from where we were in 2015. So it's not necessarily a spike in utilization, our utilization has stayed the same, but wasn't properly budgeted last year. Still on the increases, building equipment, so this is, this $25,000 was budgeted primarily for moving expenses and any ancillary furniture that we may need for the new facility. As you know, most of the furniture we have in the current town hall is the property of the tenants, or property of the landlord for that facility. We are acquiring furniture secondhand anywhere we can, so anybody that has a lead on office furniture will gladly hear from you. The fire per diem, increase of $32,000, that's something that the board considered specifically. That is primarily to expand the night and weekend coverage in Barrington. Highway vehicle maintenance, increase of $20,000, primarily investing in the older equipment we have, keeping that on the road and functional. Gravel road upgrades, upgrades, this is a transition from another line, which is being zeroed out with a net loss of $5,000. On the decreases side, the incident fund is proposed to decrease $15,000 to properly budget for planned expenses. Legal is proposed to decrease $10,000 based on previous year's utilization. General government buildings contracts is proposed to decrease $26,512 as the school and town shared services going forward will have no financial exchange. The building maintenance line is proposed to decrease $50,000 this year based on the planned utilization. You'll remember last year, the air handler units for the public safety building were a big expense in that line, and so you'll see the big reduction because there's less utilization planned next year. Continuing on decreases, communications down $24,000. Again, most of that money was absorbed in the administration contracts line. Highway building maintenance down $10,000 based on planned utilization, and the highway gravel roads down $15,000, again, combined with another line, with a net loss of $5,000. Spoke briefly about the new town hall, so for departments in the town hall, let them know that if there was anything they would need moving into new space to properly budget for it this year. The town clerk's office, she anticipates $1,300 in furniture costs. We talked about the rental lease line and the equipment line, and then the building office has indicated a need for $2,200 for furniture. And so this information's also available with the town hall project information on the town's website. So just pulled this one out to go over a few specific details, and then we'll talk about it again later. The Green Hill Bridge replacement is a, it's a state aid bridge project for fiscal year 2022, 80% of state funds. That's to replace the single-lane bridge with two 12-foot travel lanes. Total project cost is just under $2 million in 2019 money. The town's portion is 20%, $400,000, and utilization of fund, fund balance for that 20% portion indicates no future tax impact. And so that's certainly the second to biggest ask for voters this year. And then the same reoccurring Warren articles, which we'll cover later. The only major changes is an increase to the highway heavy equipment from 75 to 100. The elimination for this year of the paved roads, $100,000 with a commitment to use the capital reserve from vehicle registrations. Increase of fire truck by $5,000, and everything else generally remains the same as previous years. Again, we talked about fund balance, using fund balance for capital projects. It's responsible investment in capital projects while reducing the tax impact. Uses the unexpendited appropriations, and they are taxes raised, and then the revenue in excess of projections, and then the fund balance is a savings account for cash flow in case of emergency. So that's the general presentation. Certainly, if there's any questions, in general, we can cover those now. The plan moving forward is to hold the public hearing necessary on the Stormwater Asset Management Bond, and then hold the public hearing on the operating budget and Warren Articles. My intention is, after the public hearing portion is over, to go through the Warren Articles individually, to record the Select Board's recommendation, just one by one. So I think the appropriate time for board or public input would be now or after the Stormwater Asset Management hearing.
My general thought is, let's finish up the asset management, and then we'll have one conversation open and both for public comment.
Perfect. So what the taxpayers will see on the warrant this year- Perfect. So what the taxpayers will see on the warrant this year, Article 1 is always election of officers. The select board, there's two available for a three-year term. Trustee of trust funds, one available for a three-year term. Cemetery trustees, one for a three-year term. Library trustees, two for a three-year term. Moderator, one for a two-year term. Supervisor, the checklist, one for a six-year term. The filing period is at the town hall from January 22nd to January 31st. That January 31st is a Friday, and the town hall will be open from 3:00 to 5:00 on the dot. So the deadline to file for any of those positions is 5:00 on Friday, January 31st. Article 2 is a zoning article. The text is available in the handouts and available on the town's website pertaining to the solar ordinance. We already talked about Article number 3, which is the library and community center. And then this stormwater asset management grant is Article 4. So if you'd like, you can open the public hearing on this one and address any questions that people might have.
So start with the comment. Any comments from the select board?
I have none. Thank you.
Any commentary from the advisory budget committee? I'll open the public hearing on the stormwater asset management grant. Seeing no public comment, I'll close that public comment, and I will open the public comment on the operating budget for 2020.
So again, I know the text on the screen is small. This is the warrant article as it will appear. The language, all of the, well, the entire budget binder, almost 500 pages, is available on the town's website, barrington.nh.gov/2020budget. And then in every, every town administrator report, the details from that specific budget have been included. And attached to this report, the summary for this budget, and the budget forms, the state forms for the budget are attached. So you'll see both the proposed operating budget and the proposed default budget.
Any commentary from the board? Seeing none, the ABC. Anything for public comment? Hearing none. I'll close public comment. All right. So at this point, we're just looking to roll down through all our warrants and provide a vote on them. And you're happy with that, right?
Absolutely. So what I think, if there was any public comment for the public hearing portion of the meeting, any public comment for any other warrant article other than the budget, the stormwater asset management, or the library bond, they're all listed on the agenda and in the warrant, which there were packets available for. And so if any, there's any public comment, I think now would be the time to address that. And then if there's no public comment, the board can move forward. I would take your vote of recommendation. That's what I thought.
Right. Which as we just said, public comment, last call. Come on up, please.
Susan Godey, Yellow Franklin Pierce Highway. This is not a question about the library. You might be surprised. When I was just reading it this tonight, on the service-connected total disability credit, I think, I'm trying to think, there was, there's a petition one and a one you're recommending. And I guess I would just ask if you could comment a little bit on the difference in the logic. So that was one question. The other question I had was on Article 18 on keynote. And this is just a question to, is it required that that come every year before the voters? Because it seems like we voted it down two or three times, and it keeps coming back. So I'm just interested in why that keeps coming back. Thank you.
I proposed, warrant Article 17, I proposed an increase to the service-connected total disability credit for the 35 members of the Barrington community that experience total disability that is service-related. My recommendation of $2,550 in that regard was to create an incremental increase in conjunction with the all veterans tax credit. This $2,550 would bring the tax exemption for those experiencing total disability that's service-related. For those 35 individuals, it would bring their tax exemption to $3,000. And my proposal with that was to allow for an incremental increase in this. So next year, bringing it to $3,050, and in conjunction with the $450 would increase it accordingly and over the next three years. But the impact to the Barrington residents, so that an incremental policy change would not impact the Barrington residents as quickly as if we impacted with a $4,000 increase. And I will tell you my background. I am a 34-year military spouse. I feel very strongly about supporting our veterans. I feel just as strongly about being smart about how we affect policy change.
Well, and I guess I'll just say that I favor your incremental approach. So when you got to the number 3,000 or whatever, you're taking the $2,550 and adding the $4,500?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And this is a tax credit, not an exemption, not a reduction in the valuation?
It is, it is an actual $3,000 off their tax bill.
Okay. I now understand. I was trying to get the numbers straight. So, and I remember from the prior meeting, I think that George had said he was going to submit a petition article for the full amount allowable, I think, in state law. So I get that now.
And I can just elaborate on that. When you, when you looked at it, Tracy actually had done the calculation on it, that it works out that there's, by the time you add everything up, there's almost $85,000 that is completely taxed, pre and exempt for totally service-disabled?
It's slightly less than that. It's $62,000 for those people receiving social security disability or social security based on age and the full amount paid by the Veterans Administration for total disability. So it seemed unwise to me, and I certainly recognize our veterans are 1 percent of our population, and they protect the other 99 percent of us. That is very, very clear to me. But I do feel that incremental change is often wise.
Thank you. I just was, it was just confusing to see both articles, but I get it now. Thank you.
One of the other questions you had was on the keynote question, which was warrant Article 18. And it was, it was petition back in front of the board to request to put it back on as a warrant article through local business. So in allowance with the request of local community businesses, as well as the voters, the voters have the opportunity, again, to say, no, that's not what we're interested in in our town.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I believe George would like to comment on Article 19.
I'm going to comment on Article 19 and also partially include Article 17. January passed, the legislature office voted to put an additional $2,000 to permanently disabled 100 percent veterans. So currently, they're receiving $2,000. The legislature voted to add an additional $2,000 to it, and my warrant article is in accordance with that, to turn around and come to the voters to see if the voters would approve that going to a total of $4,000 instead of the current $2,000. That would be an additional amount of $70,000. Currently speaking, it has to be permanent according to what the VA does. I would like to let you know, there are other individuals in this town than the 35. And before I go a step further, I am one of those 35. I failed to do it the first time I brought this up, and I was notified about this. I want to make sure everybody is aware of that. The other veterans in the town that are at 100 percent have not been made permanent by the VA, so they do not qualify for that. So consequently, they're still receiving, they're only receiving the $450 for service. That has nothing to do with payment for any disability or anything, just the fact that they served. And what I'm saying, what, when Article 17 came to a vote with the Board of Selectmen, I had no choice but to approve it, because I can't turn around and put Article 19 before you as a petition warrant article to allow the other veterans to have it. The other piece I'm going to say to you is that unfortunately for me, I retired in 1983. In 1983, I retired and I went to work. And because of my training that I received and the education I received from the government, I was able to get a very good position with other companies. And fortunately, I was able to maintain that and put savings away. But then come 2006, the diseases that I have came knocking on the door and I went to the VA. So consequently, I'm doing that, and I'm surviving year by year. I don't misunderstand that word, surviving. My numbers just change every year and go that way. So that's the reason why I'm asking, you know, consideration of what's going on here. And also, I'm not going to speak out of term, Mr. Chairman, because I know that you and the town administrator are going to have another lot of vote on this. But that's what I'm going to do. And so for you, Susan, to let you know that originally we're getting $2,000, and mine was just to raise it to go to $4,000. And when the legislature did pass it, the legislature did not put any monies with it. They just came out and said, this is it. And they didn't use anything else for consideration. And partially, I believe, the reason they did it is that men and women of the state that were and are not, were not in the military, with their increase to social security or anything else, it's kind of put things differently. But thank you for listening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just quickly, I'd like to note that what the state voted was not to increase from $2,000 to $4,000. What the state voted was to allow each municipality to decide to provide that credit up to $4,000.
I stand corrected. Yes.
Thank you.
Very 100 percent.
Hey, we're all done for a moment. Again, for this matter, and I'm not sure where this question just resides. So if there's another part of the meeting, if this is better asked, then we'll go that way. Specifically, do we have an all-in number for the town hall? And I know there's a certain amount for the building, and my understanding is there's some site work that needs to be funded, and you're buying, okay, I see, check, is that, and I know we're buying furniture and, you know, and the like. So is there one number all-in for that?
There is. And like I said, that information's available on the website. And the purpose of presenting with the budget, those items which are related to the town hall in some way or another, is to, is for that very purpose. So future operating budget impact is, because the town hall won't be rented anymore, the portion of the no future tax impact was, that $65,000 will be offset with the bond repayment. So there won't be a future operating budget impact. And the current year operating budget impact was indicated on that slide. And so we're keeping track of every dollar spent. And certainly, the proposed operating budget expenditures next year, it's important to pull those out and be transparent with voters and residents of that. To your point about site work, no, absolutely. All costs for the design and construction of the new town hall are included in that $1.9 million. The, you know, the lease requirement, we've been in that building for eight years. And the lease, a rental lease, just like most rental leases, indicate language which requires the town to return it to a similar condition when we started renting. Over those eight years, there's been a lot of deterioration to certain portions of the facility, including the pavement. And so including that money, you know, certainly it has nothing to do with the new town hall, and certainly expenses that we have either way. But I think it's a transparent way to show voters every penny that it's going to take to get from the current town hall to the new one, and where that money comes from.
Good. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments related to any of the warrant articles through 19? Article 1? Twenty. All right. Closing public comment. So moving down through the warrant articles, I will ask for a roll call vote from the
The planning board prepares a recommendation for zoning articles. The select board should start at the library bond article, or should, number three is the first numbered article for select board's consideration. And certainly, the select board and advisory budget committee can have as much discussion as they'd like while considering a recommendation for each article. The, in the draft warrant available to select board members and the public, the advisory budget committee recommendation votes are recorded at the bottom. And there's two advisory budget committee members present if you should have questions while considering
Select person there, would you see Mr. Bailey has a comment?
No, I have, it's three ABC members here.
Oh, excuse me. Oh. Our double-duty select board member, George Bailey, is also a member of the advisory budget committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So starting at warrant Article 3, roll call vote?
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
I believe it's still a bit high, but naff aye. $300 a square foot is what I've talked consistently about. I will support it.
This article will be recommended by a vote of 3 to 0.
Article 4, stormwater asset management grant, roll call?
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye.
This recommendation will also be recorded as recommended by a vote of 3 to 0.
Operating budget, $7,30847.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. 3 to 0, is it?
3 to 0.
The Green Hill Road Bridge replacement at $2 million.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. 3 to 0. Highway heavy equipment capital reserve of $100,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. 3 to 0. The bridge in Culver Capital Reserve at $75,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. So again, 3 to 0. The fire truck capital reserve at $55,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. 3 to 0. Emergency communications upgrade capital reserve at $50,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. The fire truck and rescue equipment capital reserve at $10,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. The tricentennial celebration and expendable trust at $5,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. The cemetery capital reserve at $5,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. The library technology capital reserve at $3,000.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. The solar energy exemption for 100 percent of the value.
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article 5.
Naff aye. That's not silence. Elderly exemption, single income limit of $36,000.
Aye, present.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Do we have a chance to discuss these before the vote?
Yes, that's what we were talking about.
I would like to have a discussion on this before we finish the vote, please.
The elderly exemption. Go ahead.
That's correct. My concern on this elderly exemption is that I do agree with it, but I just... My concern on this elderly exemption is that I do agree with it, but I just think that we're putting 42 individuals, we're giving a possibility of a raise of $6,000. I think it should be noted that these individuals are in need, as I had spoken earlier, for the fact that social security has gone up and we need to compensate to help these people out with, so that's my discussion, Mr. Chairman. Bailey, aye.
I'd like just a general comment on your area.
Please.
That when we looked at it, the single elderly exemption was the one area that seemed substantially below every other area for acceptable levels of support.
And that's one of the reasons why I held my comments like I did, because I think it's, it's, this is Mrs. Hardikoff, sorry, I don't know which one, because I don't want to get in trouble, but.
Sorry, Mrs. Hardikoff.
But anyway, that's how I feel about that, so I will vote in favor of that.
Aye.
Aye.
So again, three to zero. And then discussion, because we have two warrants, service connected total disability credit of 2550 and a petition service connected total disability credit of $4,000.
So I had emailed the board earlier today, certainly I don't expect that you would have reviewed it, but I also provided a copy with you here on just the specifics of what to expect if both articles go to vote. So first, the petition article will be on the ballot regardless of any action here or deliberative session. The select board sponsored article could be pulled tonight from the warrant. Either article, if one or both were to appear, either article would be eligible for adjustment at deliberative session. And so the primary questions that I asked had to do with assuming that both were on the warrant, what would happen if there were two articles pertaining to the same topic with different dollar values. Essentially, there's not a lot of guidance in the RSAs that indicate how to handle a situation like that and all the advice was to rectify it either before deliberative session or at deliberative session. If we did go as far as the town vote with two warrant articles dealing with different dollar amounts, the best guidance that the law gives is to have prevailed the article which is passed last. So typically petitioned articles are listed at the end, it's the select board's control what order articles are listed, so that would be an important consideration for the select board before we move to the vote. At deliberative session, if both articles, if the select board doesn't pull the article tonight, which I'm not suggesting that you do, just listing the options and implications, but if both articles go to deliberative session, both articles will be on the warrant regardless of how they're amended. So even if both articles are amended to say 2550 or 4,000, they're still going to be listed as two separate articles and we'll probably get a bunch of phone calls saying that we misprinted the warrant. The, if, if the warrant articles are adjusted at deliberative session, one could be nullified by saying, vote to amend the service connected total disability in accordance with article number, the primary article, if you will. So those are essentially the options available to the board. I certainly don't have a preference, except that you go into it knowing what to expect with the options that are available to you.
Select person Hardikoff?
So it appears to me, based on the legal information that was provided, that if the board votes to move warrant article 17 to number 19 and number 19 to 17, and the townspeople vote in both warrant articles, that the service connected total disability credit of 2550 would prevail if it was lower.
That's the legal advice that the town has at this time, correct?
So if we're not going to remove one of the two warrant articles, my recommendation would be that 17 and 19 be switched.
And that decision can certainly be made after deliberative session, that doesn't have to be made tonight or prior to deliberative session. After the warrant is finalized, which happens at deliberative session, the select board can vote to decide in order if it's different than what was presented.
Or tonight?
No, certainly you can give your indication tonight, there may be other changes between now and then, because at deliberative session, the credit level in either article could be changed. I would think that the group, in the group present on deliberative session, if introduced with an amendment to either warrant article, would probably vote to change them both to the same thing. It's possible that no amendment is introduced, but it's, it's possible that what the voters are presented with will be decided at deliberative session if both articles go there.
George?
So may I just, town administrator, so what you're saying is that if 17 and 19 were to change places, then 17 would be the vote that would count if both of them were there? Or if we turned around and took article 17 and removed it tonight, and then article 19 would be amended at the deliberative session?
Could be. So if the, if the select board's decision was to remove article 17, the board sponsored article, from the warrant, I would certainly anticipate the introduction of an amendment at deliberative session from the select board to change the petition article from 4,000 to 2550, which again would be a decision of the registered voters attending deliberative session.
Then my other question is in your note that you handed out, and please, I'm just asking for clarification, in the one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, it says it was recommended to put them in to see if the town will vote to amend the service connected total disability credit in accordance with article 7235. And so how would that play, so would you have that replace article 17 and leave it the way it is, because that makes change, or is the privilege going to be necessary at deliberative session?
The language, as long as the subject matter remains the same, the language can change. So I think what you're referencing is if both articles go to deliberative session, one could be amended to essentially nullify it by saying, this article, amend service connected disability to support article, whatever article remains as the service connected disability credit adjustment.
Yeah, because I know, when I, when we were discussing this over the past couple of months, we were discussing this on occasion, I made it clear that I was working to put a petition warrant article in and, you know, I can understand that when it gets to the deliberative session, article 19, if it still is article 19, would come under scrutiny. So I was fully anticipating that, but I'm willing to vote tonight whichever way the board would like to go on article 17, or if they want to do anything with article 17, but now's the time to do it before the, let's see, tomorrow's the last day, is it, am I correct, tomorrow's the last day for petition warrant articles?
Deadline for petition warrant articles is Tuesday, January 14th.
January 14th.
Unless it proposes a bond, then the deadline is January 10th.
Okay, thank you. I have for tomorrow.
Select question Hardikoff?
This select person would like to move the warrant articles, the numbering, so that 17 and 19's numbers are switched.
Does the rest of the board feel of it? Select person there?
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Naff, aye. So per vote, we will switch articles 17 and 19 based on a two to one vote. So now voting article 17, petition service connected total disability credit to $4,000, roll call vote?
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article nay.
Naff, nay.
Not recommended by a vote of two to one.
Article 18 to allow.
Mr. Chairman?
Select, yes.
Because, because of the ruling, would that be a one to two vote?
Yes, one in favor, two against, to be consistent with everything else that we have noted.
Well, no, I was just asking that because of the, what I read, we read earlier tonight, so it's one in favor, two against.
So that's.
Not recommended.
So that's certainly language that the select board could adjust in the recommendation from DRA and how to list recommendations is to state clearly that an article is or is not recommended. So if an article is not recommended, the, the recommended vote would be to vote how many people, what majority didn't recommend.
Right.
Two to one. If you'd like to adjust the wording, we certainly can, but whereas the alternate is saying the article is recommended by the select board, the vote would be to consider whether it was recommended or not, which would.
Mr. Jim, recommendation was not recommend to dictate the presence of the vote.
Right. And again, that's the, there's a lot of communities that by town meeting vote are required to list a recommendation, that's what DRA indicates as a recommendation. Quite frankly, the town of Barrington has done it differently in the past. I prefer this language because it's shorter and I think it more effectively communicates the recommendation, either recommended or not, but it's up to the select board.
I mean, differently to it, it doesn't, it's whatever is cleanest and clearest for the residents of Barrington to understand the language.
Two against, one in favor, I can stand there, that's fine.
Okay. I think if we listed not recommended, the select board does not recommend it fast, we can continue with that process.
It's what our voters are used to.
No, that isn't what voters are used to, sorry.
They used to.
Yeah, so it's a, it actually wasn't consistent before, there was different language to use for different articles and it, the, if an article is recommended unanimously, it was indicated that it was recommended unanimously and.
Okay, so we're using is recommended or is not recommended?
That's what I've included in the draft warrant.
Okay.
Under the select board's draw.
Is not recommended by the select board.
Yep.
Are we moving to?
Yep, moving on to 18.
Article 18 to allow Keno in Barrington, roll call vote?
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
I'm going to part ways with you here because I'm not gambling, but I did vote to put this in front of the voters, but nay on this.
Select person, naff, is aye. So again, two in favor, one against. Article 19, service connected total disability credit to 2550. Select person there?
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Naff, aye. Again, a vote of two to one. Any other comments from the board?
Just to go back to Keno, I mean, Keno's, I understand people call it gambling and that's exactly what it is, but the money's from that, we still receive monies whether we have it in town or not, it goes to the school, we just want other individuals to realize that's it. So if we don't have it, we're still going to get monies from the other town who are on the list, so if we approve it, it can only go to establishments that have a liquor license. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, moving on to the operating budget, the budget and, the budget since we've already finalized the warrant articles, so, no, we're not that far yet. So operating budget of $7,300,847 with a default budget of $7,167,887. And before we take a roll call vote, I would just like to again commend the department heads, the town administrator and everybody, the advisory budget committee and everyone that has worked so hard to help continue to drive down the tax impact and keep us at a net zero for tax impact to the residents of Barrington, further helping make our property worth more while decreasing our property tax rate. So thank you to everybody that worked so hard to help us successfully achieve that. I know it's very noticeable this year especially, so thank you. Vote?
Aye, present.
Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Naff, aye. Three to zero, the operating budget. Default budget, do we need a vote call?
No.
It is, yep, and so just for clear clarity and transparency, so a couple of the more
subjective decisions made by your town administrator relate to estimating revenues for a future year and putting together the default budget. And so in the materials that you have and are available on the website, the state form, MS 636, is the budget form for the state, and the last couple of pages of that form indicate the estimated revenues. It shows the estimated revenues for 2019 and what I proposed for 2020. You'll remember that we discussed revenues at one of the budget meetings and I shared my revenue estimating spreadsheet and how I came to some of the conclusions that I did. And so that information in there, certainly if any members of the board have questions or the community, that information's available and I welcome any questions about it for the justification. Also for the default budget, so default budget is a pretty interesting thing in the state where there's no, no default budget police, there's nobody really that enforces any specifics on a default budget. And for that purpose, administrators across the state interpret the terms of a default budget quite differently. For the years that I was on the school board, every, it was SB 2 district, and every default budget that we presented voters, the default budget was higher than the proposed operating budget. And that was quite simply, every, every extension of a contractual obligation is extended out to the maximum and so you put voters in a situation where they don't really have a choice but to support your budget. And again, I mean, it's, it's a subjective thing. So the, the default budget is also available on the town's website, is in the packet that the board members have tonight, that's MSDTV default budget. And on the last page of that document, you'll see the justification for every line adjustment that was made. You start with last year's approved operating budget and you make adjustments up or down based on one-time expenses and contractual obligations. And so there were a lot of decreases and the increases primarily had to do with contractual obligations and the union collective bargaining agreement. So that, you have all that information, if you have questions, let me know, but again, those are subjective decision making by me, they're informed decisions, and so if you had questions, it'd be happy to give more insight.
Any comments from the board?
I have none.
Public comment? So under public comment, I would just like to share a letter that was mailed to me from a family, a local family around requesting support around the bail reform and drug court rule. And essentially the family was, R was robbed in a home invasion in the middle of their night with their one-year-old and their three-year-old witnesses to the event. A man high on methamphetamine broke into their home while they were sleeping, stole multiple electronic devices, threatened their lives. They were able to call 911, though there, though there was no physical harm, the incident was so jarring, we decided to sell our home and move to a more safer location. The family relocated from Dover to Barrington. Criminal that broke into our home was, I'm writing to you because I'd like to, I'd like your help to advocate for the rollback of the bail reform laws that have ruined our law enforcement's ability to keep communities safe. The criminal that broke into our home was out on bail, even though he had proved to be a flight risk in the past, had no home address and an extremely long criminal history at only age 24. Over and over again, he was let go by the courts, never reporting back for arraignment or other regular, or other required hearings. As a result, he was breaking into people's cars and their homes to steal items, presumably to buy more drugs. Bail reform is the reason he was let go, the reason he was able to burglarize our home forever, changing our family's lives. Thankfully, through the hard work and dedication of the officers and detectives of our local police department, the perpetrator was apprehended within 24 hours. Knowing that he was no longer on the loose gave our family a great sense of relief. Unfortunately, that feeling was short-lived. Despite our objections, the Stratford County Court believed he would be a candidate for drug court slash rehabilitation before grand jury arraignment for. drug court slash rehabilitation before grand jury arraignment for the felony charge. We were promised by the court attorney he would have a GPS monitor and a non-contact order if the court granted him temporary release. He, excuse me, we just found out the court let him go without GPS monitoring and the felon immediately absconded, never showing up for treatment. This turn of events left us feeling totally unsafe and frankly scared. We believe what happened was a crime of opportunity, meaning we may not be targeted, targeted again, but we worry about, we worry another family will be victimized by his next opportunity. This cannot be classified as anything other than a complete failure of the criminal justice system. A career criminal was allowed to walk out of the front door of the county jail with the understanding that he was to check into a residential treatment facility for drug addiction. This criminal had no money, no vehicle, no resources and was living in the woods when he was arrested for burglarizing our home. Despite all those factors, our criminal justice system didn't even believe that he needed to be monitored while he somehow made his way to the treatment facility which was sixty miles away. The Dover Police Department spent incredible amount of time and resources helping apprehend this criminal. Their fingerprint, they fingerprinted items in our home, had a canine, search officers admirably trudging through the thorny bushes in the woods for days looking for our stolen goods, all to have the courts release a violent criminal back to the streets. The resources they poured into helping apprehend the suspect in our case surely means there were other cases or scenarios those officers had to pass by in order to help solve ours. It is insulting to law enforcement officers, this can be allowed to happen. This catch-and-release system bail reform has created is a nightmare scenario for municipal services and the safety and welfare of the general law-abiding public. Through the New Hampshire, though the New Hampshire Supreme Court has made some recent rulings to tighten the bail reform proceedings, it does not go far enough to protect the public from drug addicts who are violent. We have common sense legislation to prevent these issues from continually cropping up, ruining the lives of hard-working and voting families and businesses across the state. We are asking for help advocating for stricter bail laws and stricter tracking and inmate, and tracking of inmates released to drug treatment facilities. I won't read the person's name out of respect for who they are and their concern of it, but I can tell you I did reach out for them and ask them specifically to reach out to the Barrington Town State Reps. So, Mr. Town and Ms. Levesque, about it.
Good evening. Again, good evening, my town, I'm, what am I, I just say the heckle moment, I too receive this, exactly the same order. I also reach out to her, we had an animated back-and-forth conversation. It's bluntly clear the bail system is broken. And the bail law has been revised, but is, it really is a problem that so far defy a solution. And not to get too far into the weeds, but at the end of the day, you, she, Keno, are more full understanding with both of us understanding that having, you know, criminals like that wander the streets, it's a problem. It is similarly a problem holding people in jail with a bail that they cannot need. So we have an otherwise accused but not convicted person residing in jail and it's sometimes upwards of two months. And when that happens, they lose jobs, they lose family, they lose social connections and it makes rehabbing that person all the more difficult. So the bail laws were changed to try to stop that by giving the judicial system some guidance on how to set bail. But that is only part of that solution and much more that has to be done. Rumors just happening that said fifty-two percent, this is a national figure, fifty-two percent of our people in jail are there because of marijuana laws. And so we don't have room for a lot of these folks. And the courts have repeatedly, particularly in the National State Prison, have repeatedly come back and said, you can't, you have to do something to your prison population. You can't put two, three, more than the building restricted for in the same cell. So we're in the court order on one hand to limit the size of our penal institutions, on the other hand, we want to restrict access to bail and hold more people. So clearly, there's more work that has to be done. So I did invite her to attend, and often to driver, actually, to the criminal justice area. She already knows our Remy, who is the chair, the Remy Kushner is the chair of the Criminal Justice Committee, and these hearings will continue to go before his committee. So it's widely acknowledged it's broken, it's gonna be incremental change to try to solve this. That's why, if anybody wants to stay later and discuss this in more detail, I'd be delighted to do that.
I know, my general comment on it is that, I mean, obviously, it's a concern, I think that I would like to see our state do something to move a little quicker to make it happen and get moving. I know that isn't a normal process for us. And I also know that anybody that follows the news and watches what's going on, New York is going through a very similar challenge there and there are a lot of, so I say probably is most New Hampshire people, pissed off people about what they're doing there as well because of, when you look at who's being released, they, the way this bail reform was set up is it pulled the ability of a judge to retain people who in kind of all rights probably should be held under the bail reform system. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Bailey.
Thank you. First of all, I got to, Mr. Nap took a lot of my comments, but I'm gonna say this to you, shouldn't do the crime, can't do the time. And next, I think that, I would, I would like to talk to you afterwards, but I will say that I think the mistake was made to turn around and include all crime, whereas if you mainly was trying to take care of the fifty-two percent for marijuana, I think you should address the marijuana issue first and then put the bail back on the other piece of it because not everybody has a way of protecting themselves. All they have is that telephone and there's three little numbers they can dial. And then it puts the burden on the police department to get here and when you have limited resources that might be out doing something else for an accident or something else, it's just there. So I would like to leave the comments of that and I would like to discuss it with you afterwards. On behalf of the George, I just want to make one, one comment in terms of our, can't, if you're gonna do the crime, you have to do the time. It's great if we have the resources to do that, frankly, we don't. And we are in fact trying to take the marijuana laws off the books in such a way that we can clear more states for the people who really need to help. Unfortunately, all those bills that passed were all beaten by the government. So I would, they're gonna come back this next session. But we are trying to deal with it, it's a multifaceted issue and we can't just, excuse you, whoever recorded that, we can't just deal in one piece that. All these factors interplay with each other and that's the nature of the hearing. And I would really advocate for people go to the hearings, it's a good system because everybody gets to testify and citizens get to testify first, right after the prize sponsor of a bill. So getting down into the weeds of this is a great thing because there are many things to resolve. I don't think anybody in this room thinks that that person should be walking the streets. I don't think that that's a point of disagreement. When we do about it, as I said earlier, it's really a problem that so far is defying a solution and every state is going through this. There's some pretty bright minds, far brighter than mine, that tease in itself, so I'd be happy to stand up. The unfortunate part about all of us that comes down to is that unfortunately, we have widows and we also have single parents, whether it be one or the other gender, did I say that right? Thank you.
You have to be careful, you're getting there.
But the thing of it is, you have these individuals that are in the home and, you know, what way do they have? They have the nine-one-one and of course, I'm not gonna, but there is other way, but I'm, it's up to you, you're part of the, you're part of the court and, you know, it would be up to you to make sure that that goes through or at least has a good voice on it to represent what we're looking for here. And I enjoy talking with you publicly and I look forward to talking to you afterwards. Thank you, sir.
I have one comment and then I would like to invite the police chief up. Mr. Town, is there a, is there something that can be done to make sure that the bills are not, are not pork barrel bills so whether they are clear and to the point of what the bill is there for and they don't have added?
Is there a question somewhere?
Yes, I would, I would encourage you to promote anyone writing a bill to make sure that it is clear and concise, that the problem that is there and not have added that to it.
Writing a bill is really an act form and the people who write the bills are actually, the LSO, the Legislative Service Office, are the ones that actually write the bills. So when I submit an idea for a bill, we go back and forth and just briefly, and we're losing audience here, but briefly, the process is the LSO researches all fifty states to find out what legislatures have already been written about that same subject and tries to modify that to fit our situation. And so it is an act form, so you don't have legislators in the back cause somewhere trying to make this thing obtuse, but it does need to be comprehensive. And the, the prior bills that may have an impact on that have to fit in and globe. So they're not global, be made obtuse, but it is, you know, it is an act form. I mean, it's not always an easy thing to do, to get that idea across.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
I'll leave my personal opinion about bail reform off to the side. I just want everybody to know that this issue has been one that the executives in the area have been discussing in depth, particularly the Chief Police of Rochester has been to a number of these meetings. The academics would like you to think that it is academic, they passed along this without shareholder knowledge, the bail commissioners being one, that they didn't really invite to the table, that's being rectified now. So we are on top of it as much as we can be, we'll do what we can. If those folks want to reach out, I'd be more than happy to speak to them.
Great. If you would like, I'll gladly share what you have to. All right. Review of meeting minutes from December sixteenth.
One quick note, yeah, on the minutes, you'll remember that we held the hearings for that community development block rant. I put the draft minutes in front of the eyes of Donna Lane who was present. Her preference was to include a full script of what she said, verbatim, and so I have an updated copy of the minutes that includes that for your signature, so that change has been made to the minutes. Again, it's just exactly what she, the paper she read from.
Also, I'd like to close public comment because I didn't do that, so closing public comment. And review of minutes.
Motion to approve as amended by the town administrator.
Second?
Roll call vote?
Aye, present. Barely aye.
Hard cop aye?
Naff aye. Sorry. All right. Staff reports.
So most that we have to discuss is on the agenda, a couple of general items of information listed in the, in my report. So Eversource sent an invitation to me to attend an event at UNH followed by a hockey game. I wouldn't accept such an invitation without the blessing of the Select Board. I indicated the UNH and Eversource partnered for sustainability and energy efficiency. I think an extended, an invitation was extended my way because of the construction of the new town hall, some of the innovations, so it's a networking event before followed by a hockey game. Like I said, I would never attend without the Select Board's blessing, so without objection, I'll attend and report back, but certainly speak up if you object.
Any objection?
I have none.
Go Wildcats.
Thank you. So I wanted to give you an update on Richardson Pond Dam Engineering Services. The Conservation Commission reviewed the four respondents and selected Malone and McBroom to pursue the engineering services necessary on the Richardson Pond Dam. This firm, under a different name, has previously provided services to the town for the Swaim Lake Dam and as the point person, I will continue to look forward to working on this project and with the selected engineering firm. There will be a conversation forthcoming between the Conservation Commission and the Select Board. I made the Select Board's position clear to the leadership of the Conservation Commission that the Select Board doesn't intend to raise taxpayer dollars to pay for the necessary improvements to this dam. So far, the Conservation Commission has only authorized ten thousand dollars towards the engineering services. Once the engineer digs their teeth into the assessment, probably later this spring, the options available and price tag associated will likely become more clear. There will certainly be construction costs and additional engineering costs. The engineering costs in the proposals, based on the different options available, all totaled over a hundred thousand dollars and that doesn't include the construction costs necessary. And so my role in this project is certainly to make sure it's done to the Department of Environmental Services' satisfaction and I intend to continue moving, but after that ten thousand dollars is spent, there's gonna be bills coming in with no funding source. So I've encouraged the Conservation Commission to come to a conclusion and get in front of the Select Board if they don't feel the same way the Select Board does as far as a funding source for this project. So please be prepared for that conversation upcoming.
Is there schedules, is that conversation being scheduled?
No. No, I haven't, I haven't heard back if the Conservation Commission, I don't know if the Select Board rep to the Conservation Commission recalled the conversation of expanded funding at a recent meeting. I don't believe the Conservation Commission has taken up the topic.
Not yet.
Okay.
So is there a meeting planned for that to be discussed so that the Select Board can have that, can plan for a timely meeting with the Conservation Commission?
I have to live up to date, but I met with the Conservation Commission Chair to share the Select Board's thoughts and opinions about it, explain the justification rationale. I think the information was received well, but it's one member of the Conservation Commission. And again, my advice was to get it in front of the Conservation Commission soon, to make a determination, get in front of the Select Board, so that's ironed out. Again, my only interest is to keep the project moving and to pay the bills when they come in and I can't do that if nobody's gonna pay for it. So right now, we have ten thousand dollars to spend, which will cover the assessment portion of the engineering, but there will be many more bills to come, likely totaling over a hundred thousand dollars or more. And I'd like to get that ironed out before we get too far into the project.
Yeah, I think it's important that the Select Board and the Conservation Commission have a meeting and do get that sorted out because the last thing I want is to see that stalled just because we have a discrepancy over the agreement of what was put in place when that land was acquired.
Right, and we've already missed the deadline. Fortunately, I worked well with the Department of Environmental, or the Dam Bureau, Department of Environmental Services, to give us a little bit of a grace period for accomplishing the requirements of the letter of deficiency, but we're already a year and a half behind where we're required to be and I don't think that grace will last forever, so I would also not like to see any delays.
I agree and I appreciate you working that out with the D S. Select person there, you have something to contribute?
Yes. What Connor did, and we had a LinkedIn meeting at Milos on the twenty-sixth, everything Connor had said was discussed at the meeting. They have understand, once there's more information, then they'll act on it then. Right now, they agreed to pay for the initial studies, they understand the situation and with more data, it will come back for them. Right now, they don't have an answer, they don't, we don't have any data.
So the next item, the Transfer Station and Recycling Center Review Committee, so this was, this proposal was brought to the Select Board during the budget presentation. We performed a preliminary analysis which certainly indicated that a more in-depth review is necessary as the Select Board has indicated over the last couple of years. And so we're putting, starting to put the word out there for applications for appointment to this committee. We certainly hope to have citizen and staff participation. And I, this was an opportunity for the Select Board to make any decisions around the parameters, so whether the Select Board would like to appoint a representative to the committee, decision doesn't have to be now, but certainly to think about if the Select Board would like to set a limit on the total members and certainly get the word out if there's any resident interested in participating. The application for appointment is available on the town's website, it's also linked to today's report. And we hope to get started soon, digging in, digging our teeth into where we are now, where we should be and what we can do to get there.
I know I have a few, a few folks who are actually interested in it, so I will make sure that they get an application for appointment.
And all of those applications for appointment will come before the Select Board for consideration and a decision can be made at that time. and a decision can be made at that time for total number of members and Select Board participation and things like that. At this time, I anticipate two staff members to be on the committee, and so, you know, if we have a Select Board member and four residents, that's seven, that's a manageable size, but like I said, we can make the final decision once we have applications for appointment in, and if the Select Board is comfortable with where we are now and where we're headed, we can set a deadline for the application for appointment sometime before the next Select Board meeting at the end of January.
Okay.
Awesome. Any other input or questions about the Transfer Station Review Committee? Not on the agenda, just two things I wanted to mention because we have a second. The phone system cut over is tomorrow. Select person Naff, as a member of the Technology Committee knows, it's been a long path to get here. This is something that's going to save the town a lot of money, and the functionality will be increased also. So the cut over date is tomorrow, we'll have an alert on the website indicating that services may be interrupted for a period of going to a few hours. The police department will be primary, the Public Safety Building will have priority for the cut over, so their downtime should be limited to minutes, but I wanted to give the Select Board an update about that, and certainly I'll keep you posted. As we make the transition, all the phone numbers will still be the same, impact to residents should be minimal. I also wanted to give an update about the generators that we encumbered some money for. So after review, the town isn't interested in moving forward with purchasing those used generators, so we're going to cancel that encumbrance, and I wanted to give special thanks to the folks at Generator Connection who offered some consultation through the process of what was available and what was necessary. And that concludes the general information, and there's a few agenda items.
And just for, for public information, the savings on the phone system is, moving into the new system will be $35,000 a year?
Thereabouts. So the one thing that makes it difficult, so right now, we pay about $35,000 a year for our phones. So we rent, all the, all the phones that we have on our desk right now cost a town somewhere between $25 and $35 a month. We lease them, we don't own them, and then there's services on top of that. And so the bulk of the cost, the cost savings comes from the fact that we bought $180 phones, which are nearly identical. We own them and should last us a long time, hopefully. But the, the cost savings is an interesting point, because the, when we switched to Office 365, that comes with rolling software upgrades. So we won't have software purchases in the future, and so those costs weren't necessarily budgeted annually, so the net loss in the budget is closer to like $24,000, but we don't have future costs for software upgrades. So in the operating budget, you'll see a reduction of about $24,000. The total cost savings to Barrington is much closer than $38,000, and that's per year.
Right.
We, we own the phones now, and then the licensing is, is much more reasonable, so.
It's not an enormous amount, but $38,000 adds up over time.
Absolutely, and special thanks to the Technology Committee. All of that was put in place long before I was here. I was handed a, a package that was ready to implement, and I've been pecking away at it, so good work by the Tech Committee. Municipal Office of Administration, call.
For your signature tonight, I have bill management check date 12/26/2019, as well as 1/2/2020, AP summary check register for check date 1/6/2020, and one administrative tax payment in the amount of $561 for taxes that were paid at the time of repurchase due to the timing did not clear the system. That's it?
Very good. Under Old Business, the Barrington Library Foundation Sign Permit Application, which everybody should have received a copy of.
So this, the, the foredate sign indicating the proposed site for the future library community center, a request was made to the Select Board last year to locate this sign on the Ramsdale side of that lot. The sign actually remained up for most of the year, was recently moved to the Route 9 side of the lot, and the sign permit application request, Select Board is owner, similar as you sign building permit applications for work done to town facilities. This is a town lot, and the Select Board is practice of following the zoning as if we were property owner in town. And so the applicant is the Barrington Library Foundation, the owner is the Town of Barrington, and it's available for the Select Board's consideration tonight. The proposed duration of the sign is the calendar year of 2020, and as long as it's 10 feet back from the road, which my understanding is that it is, it meets all the zoning requirements for that area of town.
General comment from the board? Full call vote?
Aye. Present.
Aye.
Hard to call by?
Naff by. Select person Hardikoff?
I just wanted to point out that the Library Foundation is running a red ribbon support. It's a good opportunity to recycle your Christmas ribbons, so that we're getting dual purpose and not filling any landfills. For those of you who would like your neighbors to know and show your support, you can tie a red ribbon in a very viewable area of your property as people are walking or driving by.
The Goodwill Expansion Project, the Haley Acquisition, Connor, you're...
So I'll do my best. So I, the Select Board has seen a few emails, kind of summarizing this project in its entirety. There's portions of the project which are coming to fruition, and so there are some administrative tasks and duties necessary. So a quick summary, and probably more to the benefit of folks in the audience and listening at home, for a number of years, the Conservation Commission has been working on an expansion of the Goodwill property, the conserved property off Route 9, which would expand it all the way to Ross Road and add in land areas significantly. So there's really four portions of the project. The Haley property, which is map 240 Lot 7 and 249 Lot 18. The town is acquiring that property at a price tag of $220,000, and the, the intention is that it's offset entirely from grant funds. So there are a number of grants lined up for every phase of this project, including the purchase of that property. The second is a Rubenstein lot, which the town has already acquired and only paid closing costs for, that's map 240 Lot 6. And then the Panish property, which the town would accept the conservation, conservation easement that would be held by the town. The Rubenstein and Haley property would expand the conservation easement held by Selp, which is the amendment which we've been discussing at length. And then the conservation easements, there's administrative costs association, associated with the Selp conservation easement and the town conservation easement. And the, the Select Board has voted on this a number of times, accepting grants, moving forward to paying closing costs, moving forward to accept the land, moving forward to enter into a pledge agreement for the Panish property and purchasing property. A number of things have changed along the process, that's why you voted on things numerous times. One thing is the, the conservation easement amendment. Every stakeholder involved has changed the language three or four times by now, so we have, we, the Select Board, this will be the third time you're voting on it. The Haley acquisition, which is the first thing, we'll, we'll stay on this topic, the first thing the board needs to consider, the, the acquisition of that property for $222,000, the Select Board already voted to authorize acquiring that property, but the understanding at the time was that it wouldn't, it would be funded by grants, which the intention is that it's still funded by grants, but the grants available are retroactive, so they reimburse expenditures, meaning that the Conservation Fund will need to write a check for, the treasurer on behalf of the Conservation Fund, will need to write a check for about $222,000 from the Conservation Fund, which will be reimbursed. So with that information, it would be looking for a vote from the Select Board authorizing the acquisition of the Haley properties, with the understanding that there's an approved $222,000 coming from the Conservation Fund.
I would make a motion to allow the purchase of the Haley property with an amount not to exceed $230,000, with the expectation that it would, will all be reimbursed through grant funds.
Do I have this?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I need to comment on that on the House of Commons.
I'm planning on opening up for comment, I just wanted to make sure I have a first and a second. Use a portion of the two, yes, two for you, a portion that was from grant money that's been allocated.
Okay.
Select person there, and then I would like to open it up to the Advisory Budget Committee as well. Go ahead.
That number is a total number of the cost, and I believe it's $40,000 will come out of the Conservation, and the rest will be reimbursed, 180, 190, that, through the state, that could take 30 to 45 days to be reimbursed.
Just for clarity, the, right now, the latest number I had shows that there's $240,000 in grants received or grants promised. The largest portion, $190,000, coming from DES Drinking Water Trust.
Drinking Water Trust.
Yes, okay, so the $190,000, and that's obviously the bulk of it, which is, which is reimbursed after the fact. Some of the grants, which I know our treasurer would probably be able to recite, have already been received. So right now, the $240,000 is the total committed grant money available. The Conservation Commission had previously voted to allocate up to $40,000 to cover other costs if necessary. Right now, the budget for the, the entire project doesn't exceed $240,000. So it's possible that the town, the town Conservation Fund at the end doesn't pay anything. Some of the grants require matching funds, and there's questions whether grants received can be used as matching funds for other grants, so there's some of those details that'll be ironed out, but right now, there appears to be more grant money available than project costs. Select person Bailey?
So what you're telling me then is that the, we just made a second motion for 200, not to exceed $230,000, and what you're saying, Mr. Connor, is that there is more money available from approved grants to cover that, so then the, the portion of the $40,000 from the Conservation Fund won't be used?
May not be used. I'd certainly invite the chair, or the prior chair of the Conservation Commission and current project lead for this project to speak to the details, if he's more familiar, but right now, my understanding is the grant funding, the grant money may cover all the project costs, but if it doesn't, the Conservation Commission has voted and is comfortable spending up to $40,000 of Conservation Fund money that won't be reimbursed.
Well, we just, we have a motion on the table not to exceed 230. How's that going to affect it?
Well, the purchase price is estimated at 222, so we're leaving $8,000 in the flood there to... Well, that's why I said 204, sorry, I'm not speaking into the mic. And the 240 is what has been, what we have in approved grants already.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't create any impact. That's my understanding.
All right, that's what I wanted to ensure.
And I would, at this point, request, I know Mr. Royce has some comments on it.
You don't need to get up, you can just stay right there. You are speaking from an advisory budget. I think treasurer. Is treasurer, sorry, treasurer of capacity.
Yeah. My name's Peter Royce, and I'm the town treasurer, and all we have received to date in grants is $10,000. So the rest of that is money that definitely has to come from the Conservation Fund. And again, just as a point, the New Hampshire DES grant says up to $190,000, which doesn't overwhelm me with confidence that it'll be 190. Perhaps it will be, I don't know, but I, I just wanted to make sure that it was known, we don't have that money in hand, and only $10,000 is actually tiered, and we'll be seeing what happens after the fact. The other comment I wanted to make was, I've been involved in the treasury for about eight or nine years, I guess, and it's a continuing problem where, when the Conservation Commission votes to, to do something that's spending money, there's a memorandum of understanding with the board that they will get permission from the board to spend that money. There's also, in the RSA, a requirement that there be a public hearing with proper posting of that hearing to acquire any interest, so I would assume that means including any easement interest in property. I never, ever get notice that there's been money designated for expenditure. I've never had notice of a, of a hearing being conducted. So what happens is, I scurry around trying to figure out what has transpired to the best of my ability, but I'm adamant that it is not my job, it is not Barbara Urban's job, it's not Lynn's job, it's not anybody's job but the Conservation Commission to give us some minutes which have been approved and are highlighted, the sections of what we have to look at and what we have to do. In the case of this Haley property, in the week before Christmas, I think, I got a notice that they want to close on the 31st, that there were just so many things that seemed indeterminate to me, one being the funding and the other being there wasn't really a proper conversation with the board. Instead of $40,000, it's going to be $220,000. I just hope when you meet with the Conservation Commission that you can get some of that established as policy, so that it isn't quite such a task for everyone to try to piece this stuff together.
Select person there?
Rough numbers, $302,000 in the Conservation Fund. They, $10,000 engineering, and some other parameters, they have the money in their account. As I say, that once that money in the Conservation Fund is spent by the Conservation, they have to buy votes and minutes of the expenditures, they have the money to cover it.
My point was, they were before the board talking about $40,000, and they needed to be talking about $210,000. So to me, that's a pretty big difference and a substantial concern of mine. And again, in the memorandum of understanding with the board, it is stipulated that they will confer with the board when they're going to spend money. So if you don't like that policy, get rid of it, but as long as that policy exists, I expect somebody's going to adhere to it.
And I'll just chime in briefly, so the treasurer's job, you know, first for everybody's benefit, is to make sure, by statute, is to make sure that when he writes a check, that that check is properly cut, and a lot of that has to do with the backup for the decision making for cutting that check. And so it's, it's important that the treasurer has, hopefully without having to ask, all the supporting materials. Now, you know, on the Select Board's side, we certainly collate those on a regular basis with the Conservation Commission, you know, they're supported by a paid minute taker, but there's citizen volunteers beyond that. And so I don't, I didn't completely agree with the treasurer that there's room for process improvement, because, you know, quite frankly, I was the one that tracked down and compiled everything for the treasurer to have the backup necessary to write the check, and that's where it was identified that there are a few missing pieces. One, the Conservation Commission hadn't voted to authorize a check cut for $222,000 until the week prior. And so those, the treasurer's job is to make sure that when he cuts a check, it's a good check, and it's a, you know, it's basically a citizen volunteer, it's a lot of work, and I think his, his feedback is well received, certainly by me, and hopefully will be by others, that making his job as easy as possible is important, and getting him everything he needs upfront and in a timely basis is also important. It's easy to send over a copy of the minutes highlighted after decisions made that spends money, so the treasurer knows that an expenditure request is upcoming, and he has the backup he needs already.
So is the treasurer satisfied at this point with the information that has been provided to allow this to proceed forward?
I think with your vote tonight and with the help that Connor gave me, I'm, I'm okay with that, but what I'm hoping for is that we can make an improvement in the procedure, because it has been absolutely painful in the past. It's just been awful.
So just to make sure that I, that my best hopes do not foil the plans of everyone here, I will... I will amend my motion so that 230,000, that we allow the expenditure of up to 230,000 from the conservation fund, with the hope that we will receive the 230,000 back.
And specifically to acquire the Haley parcels?
Specifically to require that, yes.
I'm just amending the language of motion. It's to allow that expenditure.
And I'll check with Connor tomorrow, but I think the bottom line in the HUD form is the 219 something, and then there may be some outstanding bills beyond that.
Okay. Is there any, would you amend your second?
No, I don't want to amend my second.
Okay, do I have a...
I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
One second, your motion, I think.
Okay. We'll call vote?
Yeah, person.
Fairly no.
Hatakoff, aye?
Not aye.
All right. So the next portion of this project relates to the goodwill conservation easement deed amendment finalization. So this is, this will be the third vote that you have on this. The changes, I've reviewed every change that's happened, the board had me send it for legal review initially. These are minor changes to protect the interests of those who have contributed, or who have an interest in the project, so there's numerous stakeholders. So you have a copy of the updated easement deed and the...
Okay.
Okay, so the goodwill amendment is attached to my report and available for signature here tonight with the board's vote to enter into the amended goodwill conservation easement.
Okay.
Just looking for the motion.
I'm assuming everyone has reviewed the information. Any comments, feedback, and this is at this point where...
Our legal department has reviewed it.
Correct.
Oh, yeah. Our legal department, the...
Attorney general.
Attorney general's office.
Motion to accept the goodwill trust conservation easement as amended and dated December 29th.
I'll second the motion. We'll call vote?
Yeah, person.
Fairly aye.
Hatakoff, aye?
Not aye.
So the last portion of this for your consideration tonight is the goodwill trust conservation easement 2019 amendment interim baseline documentation report. So I'll certainly invite the project lead to fill in the blanks if I don't get this right, but basically, the baseline documentation report for conservation easement deed indicates the condition of the property when the, when Selt takes over the conservation easement. So if there's issues in the future, everybody agrees on what the baseline is. Now, the reason it's an interim baseline documentation report is because there wasn't time to get it done before snow flew, so they covered everything that they could and finished everything later. So, the interim baseline documentation report is here to be signed by every member of the Conservation Commission after a vote acknowledging, and you all have printed copies in your report, acknowledging that this is the current baseline of the property to be added to the conservation easement.
So, how can we authorize a baseline when it is an incomplete report, because it doesn't... I mean, I read the report, and it's not, it specifically says in it that it is, that there's a whole bunch of missing stuff, they weren't able to review the site due to snow flies.
So I think you're agreeing to what's in the report now, and once they're able to complete a full, comprehensive baseline report, the added information, you'll have an opportunity to either agree with or disagree with. So I think if you see something, you see something in this report that you do not agree is the current baseline, then I think you could definitely bring that up, but it's a, it's going to be a two-part process, is my understanding.
If you would, Mr. Wallace.
Yes, as the town administrator said, you know, they were expecting on there, and that rather early heavy snowfall came, so they were unable to do the photographic documentation, which normally is done as part of a baseline documentation report, so they had to put it off. I just can mention that they, the Southeast Land Trust, that is, are members in good standing of the Land Trust Alliance, which is the national consortium of land trusts, and they have a policy that specifically addresses this. They're not doing something way out of the norm, because it's their expectation, they would prefer to have it done, but when the snow flew, they could not, but there is every expectation that it can be done in the spring, there are no, they really don't expect anything when they've got to take pictures, that it's going to look very different from what they saw when they walked out there, they just weren't doing it in the official capacity of doing the baseline documentation at the time. So it's really not a, I don't think you're trying to pull one over on anybody. Probably, I don't have an exact number, but I'm guessing three-quarters, if not more, of a baseline documentation report is independent of the photographic evidence on the ground. It's mostly done via GIS and a various research on possible toxins on the property and the, all the deed research and many, many other things that have gone into it, so it's a relatively minor portion, not that it isn't important, but it should be done without any problem come spring.
Comments from the board? I don't have an issue with that. Go ahead, select person.
No, I'm not going to comment on this here, I just think that you either have it complete or not, and we're rewarding somebody that failed to do the job, knowing full well that we're in the north, the possibility of snow, sleet, or rain is there. That's my comments, it doesn't mean anything.
Select person, Hatakoff?
I would just ask that on page three of 11, where it indicates the town of Barrington, quote-unquote, "will likely connect some or all of the trails on the property to make them part of a formally mapped and designated trail system on the 2007 easement," unless that's been agreed upon by the town, I don't know that we should be adopting a document that says we're likely to do some work in the future, or we're likely to allow some connection on other properties.
I ask, well, I don't understand the objection there.
The town of Barrington becomes responsible for connecting the trails?
Yeah, the town owns the property, because the town will maintain the trail system as it's been.
But the conservation easement is held by Selt, correct?
Yes. They don't own the property, the town owns the property. The town can derive revenue from forestry on the property, and one would hope that that newly-appointed town forester, for example, will examine this and look towards that as a possible.
And we strike "will likely" and indicate the town of Barrington may at their discretion, instead of "will likely"?
I don't have a problem with that, I, again, sort of a last moment change, I might have to go through the state and through all the granting agencies again, I don't know how much of a delay that may put on things, I...
I agree.
Let me, should we get it done? Because we should turn around and review the original contract that we have with Selt, the responsibility of putting the trails in, and when they, when the trail report and all that was supposed to be done, I mean, we're just stepping outside of the original agreement to add this to it. I don't have all the answers for it, they didn't bring the contract with me, and what select for Hatakoff brought up is a thing that we need to look at, and Mr. Chairman, you spoke of the fact of, you know, "likely," and I don't think we should take that on. I think the Selt being the one for taking care of the conservation easement, they should be responsible for it.
I'm sorry, may I speak up again? I don't want to get in trouble.
Select person air?
Town administrator is put in contact, conservation approved money to fund the town forester. They're in a process now, it should happen soon, the money's been approved by Conservation for Tim Knowles, who was picked by the town lands committee, and they're in conjunction working with Conservation on goals and objectives, and there will be trails, there'll be logging roads through there.
If you would.
I just want to mention that, you know, this has been a multi-year process, the Haley family has been very patient, they are selling the property to the town, they probably could brasket more money for it in other means, I'm not quite sure, and I wouldn't want to delay this any further, it really is not fair to them, they're anticipating this income.
Why would the goodwill conservation easement amendment affect the sale of that property when we just authorized the sale of that property?
Normally, the way these things are done is at the same table, the town would take ownership and the conservation easement would be placed on the Haley as well as the other properties that were mentioned. By the way, Connor, you forgot to mention the little four-acre town piece that's also part of the easement that we got through tax deed some years back. But anyway, I wouldn't say couldn't be done otherwise, but I really can't see any grounds for putting this off, just because they weren't able to take a few photos that they, that they will do in the spring.
I think it's more than just a few photos at this point, there was also a language change that was requested here, so just making the amendment to it...
So is really the expectation of this board that Selt is trying to screw us over in some way? I'm really, I'm just at a loss, they have been our partner in this process, they're helping us out considerably, why do we want to mess up the way they do business?
I don't think anybody is saying that anyone feels like anyone is getting, pardon the expression, but screwed out of this, it's just a matter of making sure that the language is adequate and appropriate, and if it takes us a little bit of time to get it right, we just do our due diligence and make sure it's correct.
So the other avenue of discussion with the town of Barrington, that their discretion connects some or all of the trails, could be that the Conservation Commission would be likely to connect some or all of the trails on the property? That could be the other language, as opposed to the town at their discretion?
I just would rather not change it at this point, I mean, it's going to cause delays, and the thing is, they're waiting up, and what difference does it make? The town is wanting to do trails, our town is...
As you know, we're currently in the phase of trying to decide who's responsible for
a dam, and it becomes very important when we look at language historically, I'm not always going to be here, the select board will be represented by other people going forward, and if the verbiage in the document does not spell out who has responsibility for connection of the trails on the property, I think that is important.
There could be no trails whatsoever on the property.
And that would be fine as well, but it says in this document that the town will likely connect them.
Will likely, doesn't have to. To me, that's straightforward, but...
I thought, or the town of Barrington at their discretion could choose to, or the Conservation Commission would be likely to connect trails on the property to make them formally mapped and designated as a trail system would be appropriate as well. I think the point we're getting at is, and no one's indicating that Selt has not been a wonderful partner to the town of Barrington. I think what's important is that going forward, the language in the document reflects the actual intention of the transaction, and so asking for that to be reviewed and amended one line in the document is not, in my opinion, a barrier to accepting it.
And I agree with that, I would definitely ask that it say the Conservation Commission may at their discretion connect some or all of the trails of the property.
So, I'm just trying to get it straight, is this a concern that the Conservation Commission will not do that, and somebody will come along in the future and say, "Oh, the town of Barrington must have a, come up and pay money to establish a trail system?" Independent of the commission, is that, is that what I'm seeing as the concern? I mean, the, you know, the dam is a different sort of issue, I realize, I hope one would consider it.
I don't know if they're a different issue, I think we're just trying to make sure that the language is clear, so that whoever is sitting in these seats doesn't have to go through this same exercise that we are right now.
Is the, is the commission not part of the town of Barrington? We are appointed, we, Conservation Commissioners are appointed by the select board, so I consider the Conservation Commission as the town of Barrington, really. We serve at the pleasure of the elected representatives of the town of Barrington.
Can I ask why not revise it?
It's going to delay things, that's why, it's going to have to go to DES, and that causes delays, I mean, they're, I'm sorry, there's big bureaucracy, it takes time. That's all these revisions to the conservation easement deed languages, they couldn't like figure out how they wanted the water supply protection language to be in there, which they insist upon being part of, so it's going to have to go back to them again, and they will have to review it, and I don't think it'd be a problem that they will, it was just giving me a delay, and, you know, this process has been, project's been going on for a bunch of years, it'd be good to get it done, and I really think this is picking at the finest of nits.
How do you feel about that? That's kind of the general consensus of the board right now, unless somebody disagrees with that. Select person Bailey?
Thank you. John, I don't, just go on the rest of the votes, I don't have anything against Selt at all. First item we have to understand is that we have to protect the town, that's our main interest, and if it's going to take a few words in the contract to get a change, then it's well worth it to send back and have it done. The other issue is the four acres, the four acres do not show a clear title, as indicated to us earlier, and we still have to wait for that, so what effect are those four acres going to have on the total contract that we're putting up? Until we, until we figure out where we're going to get the clear title to those four acres, as noted by Selt, you know, what are we going to do? We're going to, it's going to hold up signing of the contract also. So, I mean, we're just trying to protect the town, if it takes more time and it protects us here in the town, we're all doing our due diligence, John.
The issue of the four acres has been taken care of, I mean, the title is still unclear and probably will never be totally resolved, however, the conservation easement deed can go through, and if, the very unlikely possibility that somebody comes forth in the future and says, "No, that's my four acre, the town shouldn't have taken it by tax deed," you know, Selt is prepared to surrender it, to give up that part of the easement, but it has been reviewed by their boards, it's been reviewed by DES, and renewed by us, all the other agencies, and they say it is such a low risk that it is not worth considering. Now, this minor wedding over, John, it's likely to put in trail...
Let me stop you just a minute before we go any further in that four acres, it's not a minor issue when we're going to turn around and, we have to protect the town, now is there any recourse, if somebody does come forward on the town? There might be, but we need to have that straightened out before we go any further. Sorry to interrupt you, that last, please continue.
Comments?
I think you're absolutely right in asking to have this redone, select for Hatakoff has turned around and found areas that are there, I'm just pointing out the four acres do not have a clear title, and it was brought to our attention by Selt, so that's, there's three issues right there, so...
It's up to the chair.
Regarding specifically the town-owned property that doesn't have clear title, so the, that parcel in the deed research won't have title insurance, the title company that did the deed research for the conservation easement holder won't insure that, the conservation easement deed on that portion of the property, because it's been tax-deeded twice, the first time in 1900s, and there wasn't enough evidence that it was properly needed then, very likely was, but you need records to show it, and they couldn't find them. And then when it was most recently tax-deeded, it was, it was sent to the in-care of address, because that's what, when something goes probate, there's an in-care of address you send it to, and then once probate assigns, airs, then you're legally supposed to change the address, but the town has to go looking for that in order to do so, so the current deed is, they won't insure it, but I ran it by the attorney, and there's no risk to the town, if at some point it came up as an issue in the future, the town, you know, might lose deed to that four acre parcel, but Selt is under the understanding that it doesn't have a clear title, or the town at that time could offer to buy it back or something. But the attorney wasn't specifically concerned with the unclear title on the landlocked four acres. four acres.
Thank you. Any other comments? So how would the board like to proceed?
Well, we could go ahead with a vote pending that the line that I've indicated on page three, read the Town of Barrington at the town's discretion may direct the Conservation Commission to connect some or all of the trails on the property and make them part of the formerly mapped and designated trail system on the 2007 easement.
Yeah, Cloner also has a suggestion.
Yes?
So two things. One, we can certainly check if the option exists to finalize that language with the final report, being that this is the interim report, and the final report will be considered in May. And so I think that as long as there's mutual understanding of this board and submitting those changes, we can have that finalized in the final report. The other, the other option that I think is available is, this document wasn't before legal review. I mean, this is a baseline report, but I can certainly ask the attorney if the likely portion in any way binds the town. I understand that more specifically, the board's concern is that it indicates that it's a Conservation Commission responsibility to avoid a funding source issue in the future like currently exists with the Richardson Pond Dam. So a proposal I might have is to finalize that language in the final report, submit the changes now. You know, okay, the interim report, if the board's interested with the understanding that the language would change in the final report. But that's certainly just an option on the table. Would push that on the board's decision.
So my general thought on this is, we're getting pretty wrapped around the axle over an interim report. Why are we signing an interim report to begin with? Why are we not just waiting for a final report?
And so I was just reading back to the email exchange. And so for, to sign over a conservation easement deed, so the town is giving a conservation easement deed to Selt for the property. And in order to do so, the parties need to mutually agree of the condition. So if there's an issue in the future, you can talk about it. And so that, that mutual agreement is why it's necessary when the property is acquired. I suppose, oh, yeah, never mind. I was going to say, and I'm not positive the conservation easement deed has to happen at the exact same time that the town takes ownership, but I think it might because of funding sources.
The funding will not come through unless the land is conserved. I guess we just say that.
So it is my opinion that, based on exactly what you just said, that there is mutual agreement. Well, mutual agreement means that we amend the language to reflect what we want it to say in the interim. And then as we make the final adjustment, we accept that language again once the final report is completed.
So motion to accept with the following changes on page three of 11. That the Town of Barrington, at the town's discretion, may direct the Conservation Commission to connect some or all of the trails on the property to make them part of the formerly mapped and designated trail system on the 2007 easement.
I will make a motion to, or a second, second on that motion.
Yeah, President.
Bill, your line.
Article five.
Matt, aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
When we have our meeting with the Conservation Commission, would you consider putting the MOU on as a topic for discussion?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
What was that?
I agree that that needs to be discussed early, as there are different interpretations of the language of that MOU.
New town hall design contract. So as you know, the, earlier this, or later last year, the Select Board, or at the Building Committee's recommendation, selected Carino Construction for the new town hall. The contract for the process is separated in a design phase and construction phase. They've obviously been working on the design. This is the proposal for what will be a contract representing a little over 7% of the total project cost at $140,150. So I would be looking for consideration from the Select Board tonight to authorize the town administrator to enter a contract under these terms and to authorize the, or to approve spending up to $140,150 from the town hall capital reserve.
Motion to allow the town administrator to approve the contract with an expenditure of $140,150 from the.
Town hall capital reserve.
Town hall capital reserve, or 7.3% of the total town hall budget.
Second. Do they have a general breakdown as to where the money is being allocated? So when I look at, look at engineering resources, typically you get a line item breakdown, and they're just giving a lump sum breakdown?
Well, so they're doing concepts and design. So they separate out concept and design, $40,000 and $100,000. I do not have anything more specific.
$40,000 and $100,000 are very lovely round numbers.
Wow, it's $40,150.
And then $100,000 even? There is no way in the world I believe that's going to come out.
So it's the total materials up to.
And generally, any of the architectural design on a project of this size runs about 5% of the project.
Yeah, going into it with the Building Committee, they estimate 7%.
Right off the bat.
We're getting seven.
Again, it's a design build. Let them do their job.
It's just, when you look at it, it's usually nice to get an idea of how they're breaking out their costs.
Design build's very different than traditional. Let them do their job.
That's why you create that flexibility with the design build, okay?
I can certainly ask for more detailed numbers. I'm sure there's backup. I'm sure they didn't pick the numbers from here. And so this is, this is to develop the contract for design, and I can certainly ask for additional details during that phase.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Could you maybe consider the next round of requests with dollars? They give us the breakdown. Will it just go forward and move the project on?
It'll move on. I'm just wondering, like. I mean, when I look at it, so pre-construction planning board approvals estimating to obtain fixed firm lump sum price. Okay? Well, when we look at that, what are we really talking about? So, you know, you're talking about $100,000. So the engineering, there's a lumped number for the engineering. How much of that is the lumped in? Planning board coordination? Well, the planning board is, they're not spending any money for planning board coordination except for their time and resources there. So how much are they budgeting and planning to spend in time with the planning board?
It's all being, most of it's being done by the donor.
So, you know, there's.
No, I think it's fair request, and I'm happy to make it.
I'm just trying to get an idea of where they are here. Electrical, this is a pretty simple electrical.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm just asking for the next time around. I'm not, I, I agree with you. I'll withdraw my request, Mr. Chairman.
But when you look at that, if you really look at what's being asked, do you see $100,000 there? I don't necessarily see that. That's what I'm trying to get at is, okay, I just want to have an idea of where the money is going.
And then with the five of us that sit down and turn around and say, well, I'd like to see this change or this change, and then that would probably add to the other 2%. So who knows? Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second with a request, just that they clarify that.
Absolutely.
We'll call.
Yeah, President.
Bill, your line. Article five.
Matt, aye. Yes, hang on one second. Make me a note, please. Thank you for your patience. Under new business, closed unused sub-accounts for the community playground. I would make a motion to close the community sub-account for the playground with a balance of $31.73 to be moved to the, with the balance to be deposited in the Recreation Revolver Fund.
Second.
We'll call vote?
Yeah, President.
Bill, your line. Article five.
Matt, aye.
And just to be clear, the whole balance will be transferred and maybe pennies more than $31.73, but just for transparency.
Okay. Motion to close the town sealed sub-account and move the balance of $179.59 to the general fund.
Second motion.
Yeah, President.
Bill, your line. Article five.
Matt, aye. Make a motion to move the Tamposy stewardship balance of approximately $2,650.83, give or take a few pennies, four dollars.
Might be a whole dollar on that one.
To the Conservation Commission's sub-account.
Second.
And I would suggest, based on further conversation and review, this, I think, a great use of this money. It was originally set up for the stewardship costs of Tamposy. I think a great use of this money would be to go towards developing a forestry management plan for the property. And so while sending that money to the Conservation Fund, the Select Board could certainly add an earmark that it be used to develop a forestry management plan.
With a note for the purpose of developing a forestry management plan.
Second, as amended.
We'll call vote?
Yeah, President.
Bill, your line. Article five.
Matt, aye. Legal services discussion. We have a gentleman who has left the Mitchell Municipal Group.
Correct. So the town received a letter, included a copy in your packet from December 11th, that a member, Stephen Whitley, was transitioning to a separate law firm, Drummond Woodsum. And I included the letter. You'll see on the letterhead, that leaves Laura Spector Morgan, our primary contact, and Naomi Butterfield, along with the owner, Walter Mitchell, supporting this law firm. So certainly the letter says, if, you know, if you want to transfer your files with Stephen, let us know, and we'll send them over. And so certainly one portion of this is to let you know about that. The town has been primarily served by Mitchell Municipal Group for a number of years. We use some separate firms for specialty services, including human resources, collective bargaining, franchise negotiation, and land transfers. In 2017, the town advertised a request for qualifications for legal services. I included that RFQ, and we received eight responses. I included those responses linked to my report. And we retained Mitchell Municipal Group and continued using the specialized firms. And so I think the Select Board is asked to consider how to proceed in response to the letter. Certainly, I think there's a few options. I don't have a specific recommendation, but I have provided you the information that's currently available.
Well, by forwarding over the accounts, it wouldn't necessarily mean that the rate stayed the same, and it's.
I was contacted by Stephen Whitley that his billable rate at Drummond Woodsum is the same as Mitchell Municipal Group. So those two law firms are dramatically different law firms. One has dozens of attorneys, one has three. And one is supported by a number of paralegals and assistants. One is supported by, I think, one. The town, as the town pursues legal services now, we seek specialists in certain areas of law. We don't use the same law firm for everything. A firm like Drummond Woodsum has specialists in every area. A firm, you know, like Mitchell Municipal Group either recommends attorneys or the town uses other attorneys. I don't think I would recommend that the town, or that the Select Board make a decision to move to another law firm right now. I think the decision, if you are interested in considering the town's other options, we could certainly start by reviewing the responses to that RFQ, ask for updates, or issue another one, and see what options are available to the town. I think it's, you know, also worth seeking the advice and opinion of the planning board and staff there. They use the legal services frequently also. So, yeah, certainly a final decision doesn't have to be made now. That's the information available, looking for the board's recommendation on the path forward for legal services.
I know my feeling is when you're down to three people, and there have been a fair number of folks that have left, I think it's worth reviewing our options on how the rest of the board feels.
That's the same question I was going to ask, because I was worried about the workload being put on the limited amount of people. And whereas with the other firm, they have the added, that's just where I'm at. It's just something for us to consider.
So one thing that occurs to me is that our history falls with this firm. The other thing that occurs to me is that at larger firms where the majority of the work ends up being supported at the paraprofessional level or legal level, and then pushed up to, pardon me, the attorneys. I think if we don't need to make a change, that we see how things go up the next year, and then should we need to explore an RFQ for legal services at that time, we could certainly do that.
That's acceptable, I think.
I'm open to either. You know, my, my general thought on it is, is I'd like to be prepared, but I necessarily need to be prepared. So just making sure that we have a full and complete understanding. I do agree completely with you that much of the work is done at a paralegal level and then pushed up to the attorney. So when you look at it, you end up, in many cases, paying as much or more, usually, usually more for that.
For support.
Right.
I can change with an effort first here.
I'm fine with leaving it as is. I just would like to make sure that we at least update the information and are prepared for that. And maybe somebody may have a better option for us now at this point. That's my only thought on it.
And so Stephen Whitley was the attorney at Mitchell Municipal Group, which primarily dealt with the planning board and land use issues. And so the, you know, the history certainly in large part lies with him. You know, the town has historically been served by a variety of law firms for different reasons. It could certainly be, if the Select Board were open to it, it could certainly be a question to the staff and appointed officials of the planning board if they were satisfied with the services received, or if they would be interested in considering other options. Not necessarily advocating for the town, you know, there's certainly a benefit to utilizing one firm for a lot of services, but that would be an option also. We could have that conversation, see how satisfied they are with the services, and make an informed decision at a later point.
I think probably the best, or the most telling story from a legal end is if you look at our legal line, we don't spend a massive amount of legal money.
Right.
Which I would say, yeah, we have not, which in general says we're doing a pretty decent job, or they're doing a pretty decent job for us to make sure we're not spending large amounts of money in that line, which is ideally what we want, is a small legal budget, because we have our eyes on it and our teeths crossed.
So I will work on updating the information from the RFQ responses from 2017 and reach out to the planning board and staff for an understanding of their satisfaction with Mitchell Municipal Group in the absence of Stephen Whitley, and bring more of a recommendation or other options to the board moving forward.
All right. Thank you. Financial consultant review for 2020, the Stonehill Municipal Services.
It appears that we paid, what, $5,160 approximately?
Correct.
And you feel comfortable retaining these services?
Correct.
Okay, so motion to approve.
Second. We'll call vote?
Yeah, President.
Bill, your line. Article five.
Matt, aye.
And we'll just note the details of that Select Person, Hardicoff. So the admin contracts line has a total budget of $108,000, and $8,000 of that represents these financial consultant services, so.
Thank you. And then the assessing contract, which has been Cochran Consulting.
Correct.
I believe we had said that we would retain it in '03 last year, and we talked about doing a, sorry, my brain is sliding away from me here, putting it out for. I'm remembering slightly from me here, putting it out for people to see.
That's not what my research found. So I, I looked it up because I figured there'd be questions about that. And so what I found is that in 2012, the town went out for assessing services. I included that RFP in the responses and Cochran has served the town since. I haven't found where it's been put out or there's been talk about putting it out in the minutes. You know, that's why I searched, obviously I wasn't here. The, I will say, you know, where we stand right now, as far as what part of a cycle is appropriate to consider changing, a revaluation year, it certainly wouldn't be my first recommendation because this firm performed that revaluation and all the abatements, the administrative, the abatements that come through and the review of that revaluation happens in 2020, where they have to defend that and things like that. So I wouldn't necessarily put this year at the top of my list. Certainly if you told me that that's what we'd like to do, we could move forward. But that would be some feedback that I had initially.
Could we just check on that? Because I feel like there was a big discussion around this last year. Maybe I'm missing it.
It might not have been recorded in the minutes the same way. So I searched keywords in the minutes and then look at timeframe.
Yeah, I think if we looked at the meeting and saw the video of it, there was a large discussion about the revaluation process and what was involved with that and the familiarity of this particular group with the town. So I do know that there was a discussion. I don't know that it was to put out to bid again.
I thought it was not to do with this, this past year because it was a revaluation year.
Right.
Which is why we said, oh, we'll hold off on.
But now to.
Hang together.
I guess in listening to the town administrator, now to defend the revaluation, to transfer to anyone not familiar with the revaluation process or not familiar with the properties and how the values were ascertained could, could become problematic. So I'd make a motion to approve the 2020 assessing contract with Cochran Consulting.
Second it.
I'll go along with it, but I want to make sure that we, that this is a one-year agreement and we put that out next year then because we haven't let anybody else bid on this for eight years.
And I personally appreciate that heads up. It makes it easy to work with the town's current services provider and plan for that going forward. You know, it's tough, it's tough with a lot of different contracts. The select board's only authorized assigned one-year contracts. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of services that the town receives that the town contracts out, which are on much more than a one-year cycle. And so finding that right time to make a transition, I think sometimes can be difficult. But having heads up from the board, and certainly, you know, if we get a couple more board members, we can get, start the conversation with them early and make that a plan for 2021. So we have, you know, more heads up than when we're.
The contract's actually up for renewal?
I would also like to make sure that they understand that it isn't that we're dissatisfied with the service we're providing. It's just to do our due diligence for the residents of the town to make sure we're giving the appropriate chance to evaluate the services they provide against the services that are offered.
No question, absolutely. I'll make that clear.
I would ask that you consider having somebody research that name we talked about for last year with the ones that were on file, if we have the videos, that we can review those.
So if you give me an idea of a timeframe, I can look in more detail. Like I said, I just serve key terms in the minutes.
I know you have a timeframe on that.
It was before I was here, I can tell you that. So we're talking before August of 2018.
Yeah, I just remember, last time we discussed this and we're going through their agreement, that there was a whole conversation, I'd have to go back through my notes.
So I'll look at the minutes more specifically. It sounds like it's insignificant at this point because we've got a plan going forward.
It would have to be between March and July of 2018.
When, when did we sign that contract?
It would have been the beginning of the year, but if select person Hartikopf thinks it's when she was here.
I do, yeah, so March, between March and July of 2018.
I could do a more specific search. But it sounds like there's been a motion and a second, but no vote yet.
Roll call, vote?
Yeah, President.
Billie, aye.
Hartikopf, aye.
Vamp, aye.
And I have one item that wasn't on the agenda, I apologize. The, the, I sent out an email about it. There was a fire on Ross Road and the scene needed to be secured overnight. The town called in a police detail from the town of Strathard. There's a little over 400.
Motion to approve, second it.
And specifically, can you say that the motion is to direct the treasurer to use the police department, the police detail revolving fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second it.
Yeah, President.
Billie, aye.
Hartikopf, aye.
Vamp, aye.
And that's all I have for agenda items. I do have a need for non-public, for personnel reputation in legal.
January work anniversary.
Yes.
I should, yeah, thank you.
Amy Doherty.
Final person.
So I, I would like to ask that Amy Doherty please stand and give an acceptance speech for her one-year anniversary at Towne Abbot. Yes, our one January work anniversary is Amy Doherty at a year. We're very glad to have her and hope she stays here.
Thank you, Amy.
All righty.
Select person's reports. Select person there.
Oh, mine was stated in the TA's report and it don't know information.
Mine were canceled due to weather, have nothing to report.
And mine overlapped with our meeting.
Mine is tomorrow. So final public comment? There's a lot of public.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All the public, all the public that worked for the town. Close public comment? And motion entered non-public for personnel reputation in legal?
Yeah, President.
Billie, aye.
Hartikopf, aye.
Vamp, aye.